This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, December 12th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Will Savage, God of Another Chance Ministries, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come now in the name of your Son, Jesus. We just thank you, Father, for another meeting, Lord, and we lift up the people with authority. Father, you may touch them, give them peace, love, joy, and happiness. Give them understanding, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We want to welcome everyone to this week's city council meeting. The rules of the council are quite simple. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance, appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk's Office before 2:00 p.m. on that prior Thursday, indicating the subject that he or she wishes to address, and it must pertain to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the Clerk's Office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four of those minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has unfortunately expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to me, the Chair, who will recognize any council member or member of the administration who wishes to respond, to maintain the quorum. There will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed.
Approval of minutes of December 5th. Somu.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minister.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody this morning?
Great.
Happy Tuesday. First thing I would like to do this morning is to give the certificate of recognition to Officer Condit. So it's a very unusual situation this morning, in that there are two Officer Condis that work for MPD. So I would ask both of them to please approach the podium. We have Officer David Condit and Officer Alina Condit. Now, they've been married for 12 years. They've been on MPD for 10 years. One of them is the recipient of this award. Or maybe both of them could be the recipient. Alright, so I'm going to read the award, and then we will have a showing of hands of who thinks who wins the award. Officer Condit, and I've had to change this up the right up a little bit to make sure that it's agenda appropriate. Officer Condit has rented a service to the City of Mobile which deserves special recognition. Officer Condit realized that there was an issue with the commercial burglaries targeting cigarette thefts, and decided to work closely with investigators to solve the burglaries in the first precinct's jurisdiction. Officer Condit was able to obtain a photo of a subject who had burglarized a store on South Broad Street and stolen a large quantity of cigarettes. Officer Condit canvassed the streets, spoke with anyone who might know the suspect, or heard of someone selling cigarettes on the street. Officer Condit did field interrogations on possible suspects that fit the description. Officer Condit was able to find a street name on a possible suspect and their address. On November 19th, Officer Condit and other officers proceeded to the suspect's home, where the custody was taken into, where the suspect was taken into custody and charged with the burglary. Officer Condit excels in caring for the victims of crimes and the citizens of Mobile. Officer Condit performs beyond what is required for a police officer, making sure the citizens' needs are met. Officer Condit does not care if they are a victim of crime in a traffic accident or just in need of medical assistance. Officer Condit always goes the extra mile. Because of the initiative, enthusiasm, and excellence in overall performance, showing a proactive police style that is a tremendous asset to the City of Mobile, now therefore, on behalf of all the citizens, I'm pleased to offer this certificate of recognition to him as Officer of the Month on November 2017, with our sincerest thanks. Congratulations to both of you. My understanding is they were the first couple to graduate from the police academy at the time that y'all graduated. So, but thank you both for your service, Merry Christmas to you, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
On the subject of public safety, you know, it was a great occasion last Friday when we had the opening of the Precinct 2. It was kind of to a packed house, first time that there has been a centrally located precinct headquarters, you know, in that precinct too. Well attended by the community. It's going to enable us, our first responders, to provide better services. It'll cut the shift changing time, you know, down to almost nothing. But more importantly, it will improve the response time in Precinct 2. So we were glad to be a part of that, grateful for everybody that turned out, and we're looking for great things to occur there. Christmas events, the city's hosting a series of events. The next is the Holiday Market and Christmas Kids' Day this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can take your picture with Santa Claus and shop for last-minute Christmas gifts at the Christmas Market, which will be in Cathedral Square. After you've shopped till you've dropped, you can hop on one of our trains and head to Beatty Square for kids' activities. There'll also be Mobile's first snow maze in Cathedral Square this Saturday from noon to 4:00, and this Saturday, let's see, this Sunday from 10:00 to 4:00. While you're at the snow maze on Sunday, you can also enjoy Tuba Christmas starting at 2:30. We're one of 200 cities around the world that participate in the Tuba Christmas, so that's a great event, and hope that you will turn out for it. And I have to leave today about 11:15. There is a big event occurring at Roger Williams Project, where we will start the demolition of that housing project, which has been desperately needed to be torn down for a number of years. And so, there'll be a lot of citizens in that area that will be glad to see the wrecking ball, start to tear it down, which will probably take, you know, a month or so to do. And then, the best will be yet to come when we start putting something in the place of the structures that are there. So, looking forward to being there this afternoon to participate in that. Thank you very much, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am.
And happy holidays.
Adoption of the agenda.
Somu.
Second. Colleagues of the council, I'd like to make an amendment to this motion to adopt the agenda to add the need for us to go into executive session during this discussion. We will be going into an executive session to discuss legal matters related to threatened litigation. So I'd like to add that an executive session be added to the very end of this particular meeting's agenda. So.
Second.
Probably motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on December 30th at the Carnival Museum and January 6th in Cathedral Square.
Somu. Second.
Probably motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, if anyone my son of eye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings, today is the public hearing to rezon property at 7681 Oshel Road and 7660 Monk Avenue, area bounded by Oshel Road, Monk Avenue, Alverson Road North, and Harding Boulevard from R1 to LB2. Somu.
Second.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Is there anyone present that would like to speak?
I just put on my glasses.
In this particular public hearing on 7681 Oshel Road, 7660 Monk Avenue, anyone here? Any commentary relative to this particular public hearing? If not, public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. David Clark.
Good morning, Council Vice President, on the City Council. Good to see you today. I'm David Clark with Visit Mobile, and I have some of my team with me today. And part of the fun part of your day with you are on your tables, the destinations guide for the City of Mobile. A lot of work went in with our stakeholders and our team led by Katie Metter up there. Just wanted to give you some fun facts about the destination guide, and remember, it's a destination guide, it's labeled that way, it's not a visitor's guide, because we are a destination of our city, and it's for the locals as well. So, we printed 275,000 of them, an increase of 25,000 year over year, primarily for the carnival fantasy and all those passengers as well. We added cruise section pages, four of them, to address the cruise passengers coming in, specifically let them know of all the wonderful things to do in Mobile. And we distribute these to the welcome centers, the hotels, the restaurants, the cruise passengers, area universities, convention delegates, Mobile Regional Airport, the advertising inquiries, and many other locations throughout Alabama, Mississippi, and the Florida Panhandle, as well as anyone else who's wanting to know more about our great city. So, we're able to do this because of all of our stakeholders and their support. And there's also a digital version with active links on our website, so we wanted to roll this out to you. And wish you a Merry Christmas, and if there's any questions, we'll address them at this time.
David.
Yes, sir.
One, would you consider next year, I'm saying this is outstanding, adding the council to the book?
Say that again, the council?
Adding members of the council to the book.
Sure. We'll take that under advisement, absolutely.
We would appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, but I appreciate you and your group, what you're all doing.
Thank you.
Fantastic job.
Great. Well, we appreciate you and all of our stakeholders. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, ma'am.
And David, would you introduce the staff, the folks who are here with you today? Have them stand.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. It'd be my pleasure. To the far left, Meredith Guzzi, she's our Digital Marketing Manager, Meredith, and then Katie Metter in the red there, who led this book, The Leadership, and our Executive Assistant, Vanessa Washington. And to her right is our Vice President of Sales and Marketing, Stacy Hamilton. And down below is Tara Zeman, who is our Communications Manager.
And I see that Tara and Stacy got the memo, but nobody else did.
They dressed just alike, didn't they? They planned it.
Oh, I see. It's official.
There you go. Born to celebrate.
I like that.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for what you do.
Y'all know on deaf as opposed, this sound system is echoing in my ears real bad. I've got some handouts. I won't take very much time, I'm pretty sure y'all all know why I'm here. Several years ago.
Mr. Lilly. Mr. Lilly.
Yeah, the agreement with, I'm sorry. Need my name, don't you?
Name and address, please.
I don't have an address, I'm homeless. My name's James Lilly, I'm a retired City of Mobile firefighter, and I am homeless. All I got is a PO box. I live in a motorhome.
We'll take the PO box.
Travel around. PO Box.
Yes, sir.
1294 Theodore. Alright. We okay now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So several years ago, the pension plans had an agreement with the then-city council that each pension would receive the same raise, whether it be a 5% raise, or 2% a month, or $2 a month, whatever it would be, it'd be the same thing. As Mr. Clinton Johnson said, "I'm not going to do for one group that I don't do for the other." And it's been that way. It's been a lot of years since we had a raise. Back yonder, RSA got raises, RSA retirees would get raises, as you can see from that handout I passed out. We did not get those. Back 15, 18 years ago, council made it right, we got straightened up, everything was even. The resolution was passed the other day to give firefighters and policemen $500 flat. If that resolution would have been for $26,125 more, you could have gave policing firefighters the same raise that you gave RSA retirees. $26,000, that's all it took, and everybody's equally in. What I'm asking is, basically amend that resolution or introduce, I don't know how you do it, but give my policing firefighters the same raise that you gave everybody else. It is nothing but fair, and that's what we after. That's why I'm here. I would like somebody to tell me why we got shortchanged. Somebody's got to know. Could you answer me?
What was your question again, Mr. Lilly?
Why was policing firefighters didn't get the same raise RSA did?
I'm going to turn to the administration. Mr. West.
Mr. Vice President, of course, these bonuses were matters of city council amendment to the 2018 budget, but I can tell you what was done. First of all, there is no RSA, or there's no pension plan that the city operates for its non-public safety retirees. We elect to participate in the RSA plan. By electing to do that, we agree to follow their rules. In some cases, they give us alternatives, as they did this year, to adopt a bonus, the same bonus that would be adopted, could be adopted by other cities and counties and agencies. In other cases, they don't give us alternatives. But in every case, we are prohibited from designing our own plan. We follow their provisions as a condition of membership in the RSA plan. And so, as you know, the city council adopted a resolution electing to provide a bonus under their provisions of measurement, which had to do with length of service, a certain amount of money for each year of service. Alternatively, the city council also adopted an amendment to provide funds sufficient for a bonus to its public safety employees. And that amendment called for a $500 per retiree or beneficiary to be paid. So, the plans have nothing to do with each other. I sensed an intent on the part of the council to get those fairly close, which you did.
And what Mr. West said is exactly right.
As you know, I didn't hear a word he said.
You didn't?
It echoes in here real bad for me. All I'm asking is that y'all treat policing fire retirees as equals to the other rest of City of Mobile retirees. That's all I'm asking. And it costs $26,000.
And Mr. West, what we, Mr. Lilly, what we did was follow the plan and the requirements of the RSA.
I know what that is.
Yes, sir.
I do know that, and you can't deviate from that, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Alright. But you gave them that raise, why didn't you give us the same thing?
We followed the rules according, that were set up to us by the RSA.
This council can adopt what they want to pay, as we know. Step one.
Yes, sir.
We, you know, your policing fire was here during Camille, Frederick, Katrina, we was on the streets.
Yes, sir.
We done our part. We expect y'all to do your part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance is held over. 57026, amend Article 8, Section 57 of the Mobile City Code to add new provisions for permitting wireless facilities and support structures in its right-of-way.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
On 57026, we have had, there were issues with the wireless industry over that, and we had an ad hoc committee that worked through that with City Attorney Flo Kessler, and we have, we've come to an agreement on how to resolve those issues. And the new agreement, Madam City Clerk, do you have a copy of the new agreement? We all have given a copy of that at pre-conference this morning, and I would just like to offer to amend the motion that we accept a new agreement at this time.
Mr. Vice President.
Substitution.
Do we need to take, we need to move the original one and then amend?
Right.
So, your motion is to adopt the original one, and then we'll have a second motion to amend. So I second.
No, we just go straight to the substitution.
We just substitute for this one.
Make a motion, substitute.
That's what I mean.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Probably motion, and second to the substitution. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. I know that citizens will be interested in having this technology reach our city when the industry is ready to bring it to fruition. And what this does is allows for their infrastructure to go in right-of-way, which usually you think of that from curb to sidewalk, which is the public's right-of-way. And I guess the only thing I would like some clarification in, and I know there was some discussion that took place afterwards, that the lawyers were still kind of working it out, and I haven't really had time to read the whole thing, I'm not trying to prevent anything from moving forward, but there was talking about looking at reasonable fees because, and this is language that's in both of these ordinances that we're getting ready to adopt, one that deals with the larger towers, one that deals with the new, this 5G, the smaller towers or components. And I don't know if Ms. Cochran is able to answer this or not, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but where we talked about that they will have, if the city does not have the technology in our, in our public access, as far as an engineer to look at their plans, how did we leave it so that the cost of that does go to the applicant or the industry?
We left the language as it was, we made no changes, because after the meeting, we reviewed, the first section in this chapter provides an appeal procedure to the city engineer, which would cover that. So, if they felt something was amiss, there is a procedure already existing that they could use.
Okay, so the city is comfortable knowing that they could hire the right technician, and that would have to be the burden of the applicant to pay for those resources?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I know we were up in the air about that. And as far as the word camouflage, because I do think this is very important to the residential characters that we have throughout our city, either historic or newer with underground power placements, so is that something that is subjective, or how will that be resolved?
You know, every site has different characteristics, so it's hard to prescribe a specific standard that would work for every single site. So this gives, it's like a give and take, and I don't know if anyone from engineering is here, but typically when the applicant comes in during the plan review stage, you look at the site, and if there are some considerations, then you ask for a proposal for camouflage. There may be some minimum standards, like color, anything to make it recede, and of course, the more sensitive the site, the more important for the camouflage.
Because that's the thing that will get citizens' attention, if they, because there is no public hearing, I understand that, but at the same time, to wake up and then get a 45-foot pole in the front yard, and they have no recourse, yet there is nothing similar to that in the neighborhood. And again, it's mostly that residential character that I believe will be the thing that gets people's attention, as much as they want this industry, the same time, they might not want that inflicted on their, you know, right out their front porch.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay. That issue was raised during the ad hoc meeting, and it was agreed that all communities are not the same, that camouflage means whatever they do, it will fit into the character of that community. That if you ride down the street, you can't hardly tell it's there, because it is fitting in with the rest of the community. There is no one definition, but they were going to do all within their power to make sure whatever they do will fit into the character of the community. That's what camouflage.
I just have one more question, just basically for the community to also hear this, besides for my knowledge. Does the applicant have to show a picture of what it is they're putting up or rendering?
I do not know. I know they have to submit plans, but I don't know if they have to do visual simulations.
I guess that's something that could be administrative.
Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Gregory.
I know in some of our initial meetings, when we were looking at what other cities did, they did show pictures of what the tower was going to look like.
Do you see the engineering department going out to look at the character, especially residential? It's not so much the commercial placement, because there are so many poles and structures in our right-of-way already that can accommodate this industry. It's. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Gregory.
One of the questions that came up in pre-conference wasn't a question, but it was just an item that you all were going to clear up, was camouflage the word that y'all were looking at clearing up?
Uh, no.
We talked.
No, ma'am.
But that one word, that was a problem.
As I recall, the one word was utility.
Oh, okay.
And that arose to make sure that we weren't making an exception just for the power company, than any other utility that needed antennas for internal communications, that they would also be covered by that section.
I agree with what Mrs. Rich just talked about with camouflage and some other issues. And one thing that I would like to see, Nick, when your folks get ready to start working with any of the utilities, putting up new poles, is if you would contact my office too, to get me involved, especially with any of our residential areas, and I think probably Mrs. Rich would be right there as well, just so that we'll know what's going on and maybe have some input as to what this camouflage is. Okay, thanks.
If you're going to do it for one, do it for all. Do it for everybody.
That's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure, is that something that she and I were concerned about?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Sixty-four zero four-four, rezoned property at seventy-six eighty-one O'Shear Road and seventy-six sixty-Muck Avenue from R one to L B two.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Sixty-four zero four-nine, rezoned property at two forty-eight South Sage Avenue.
Some move.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Sixty-four zero five-zero, amend Chapter sixty-four, Section sixty-four dash four J of the Mobile City Code, telecommunications, towers, and facilities, to make allowances for new technologies.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over, twenty-one seven eighty-eight, authorized contract with Gulf Coast Benz for Copeland Cox Tennis Center chain link fence repairs.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one seven eighty-nine, authorized contract with South Alabama Electric Company for Debrum YMCA main power room and pool equipment room electrical repairs.
Some move.
Second.
Problem motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one seven ninety, authorized contract with Metropolitan Glass Company for Mobile Museum of Art glass door repairs.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one seven ninety-two, authorized contract with McElhenney Construction Company for twenty-seventeen CDB East sidewalks.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-three seven ninety-four through fifty-eight eight oh seven.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of the resolution, Gaspar.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Zero-three seven ninety-four, appoint Dr. Monica Motley to the History Museum of Mobile Board.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
There's no objection, I'll take the next two together. Thirty-seven seven ninety-five and seven ninety-six, recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license for southern liquor and tobacco on Highway ninety west, and recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Baumhauer's Victory Grill on Airport Boulevard.
Some move.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Take the next four together. Fifty-eight seven ninety-seven, eight oh five, eight oh six, and eight oh seven are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing cost for removal of weeds.
Some move.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
C I P resolution is being introduced for the first time, twenty-five seven ninety-eight.
Motion to suspend rules for meeting consideration of twenty-five seven ninety-eight.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Twenty-five seven ninety-eight, accept permanent drainage easement needed for the Irony Street Drainage Project.
Some move.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-one seven ninety-nine through thirty-one eight zero four.
Motion to suspend rules for meeting consideration of thirty-one eight oh four and the rest will lay off on weeks by council rules.
Second.
Problem motion, and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Resolution thirty-one eight zero four, authorize the mayor to apply accept and receive funding for the Department of Transportation, this year, twenty sixteen Tiger discretionary grant program.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Announcements, the city council will meet next Tuesday, December nineteenth, at the History Museum of Mobile on North Royal, South Royal Street.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory.
Oh, thank you, sir. Last Tuesday evening, I held my annual Christmas District Seven meeting at the Mobile Museum of Art, we had a great turnout, the rain started as we were getting started, but it didn't keep people away. And I want to thank those who helped me make this meeting possible, especially Marion Steinfelds and Deidra Fairly for all of their work. Also, a big thank you to the museum, Deborah Felders, and all of her staff for hosting us, they are always very gracious hosts, and of course, it is a beautiful venue. Also, thanks go out to Diane Erby, Bill Harkins, Judge Holmes Whitten, Chief Batiste, Captain Jackson, Lieutenant Smith, Chief Seeley, and members of Fire Station Eighteen for coming out and being a part of the meeting and the fellowship, and for answering questions, and for telling us a little bit about what they do in the community. I also want to thank all of my residents for coming and for bringing gifts for the children of Wilmer Hall. Every year, we do this, and it makes such a difference to the lives of those children who are able to get Christmas gifts on Christmas, so really, a big thank you to all of my residents. I had a chance last Wednesday to participate with the University of South Alabama's Leadership Program, to speak to their class, and it is a wonderful class that the university is doing, this is their second year, it's modeled after Leadership Mobile, something that President Waltrip wanted to implement, and they're doing a terrific job, I really enjoyed being there to talk with the folks in this leadership class about our city council, our city, our form of government, and to answer a few questions, and believe me, these are academics, and they had some very good, well-thought-out questions. I also want to give a big shout out to Joyce Chavers, who is the president of the Mobile Terrace Community Development Corporation. Joyce, as many of you know, is a decades-long community activist volunteer in the Mobile Terrace community, as well as the city itself. It was her birthday, it was a celebration in the community, and I was just happy to be a part of it, and I just wanted to say officially here, happy birthday to Mrs. Joyce Chavers, and to thank her for all the work that she does in our community. And that will do it. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much, I'm going to take a little more time than I normally do, and I'll try to keep it as short as I can. I'm going to ask that my colleagues reappoint me to the Mobile Sports Authority Board, my term by bylaws of the organization has expired, and if that is agreeable, then I will ask that Clerk add my name to the nomination for next week, as a first read, or in consent, rather. I was happy this past weekend to finally have an opportunity, let my calendar allowed me to join the University of South Alabama for their graduation lunch. What a fantastic gathering. I thank Dr. Waltrip and all those at South Alabama who continue to serve our community, but through his relationships across the education world, he was able to bring in the Dean of Arts and Sciences of the University of North Carolina, Dr. Kevin Guskowitz, and that's as good as I can say it. But I think it would be interesting for those that are listening and have a particular interest in the health of our children to look up the Dean of Arts and Sciences, University of North Carolina. Dr. Guskowitz is a renowned expert in traumatic brain injury research, and I think we all have something to learn there, as we have our sports programs in the city, and as we raise our own, it is very important, I think, this research that's going on, and it was a great honor to have him in the city. I'd like to extend congratulations to U M S and St. Paul's for bringing home the trophies. Amazing effort, especially by U M S, who fought through the snow and were able to come up victorious. As some people are probably thinking, what about McGill? Well, let's just say that they had an amazing season, and most people would not have given them a chance, having lost probably thirty-nine players, something like that, from last year's team, and Coach Hill and a bunch of seniors there really provided great leadership and had an awesome season, but came up second in the state. Yesterday, I was with the Leinkoff Neighborhood Organization at the Pillars, they're doing something very unique there. Again, this is not my district, this is, as I recall, is in District Two.
That's right.
And both of them are, and through the leadership of Bill Boswell and Richard Gentry, they have organized an effort to support the Leinkoff Elementary Arts Project. And I applaud them, and I asked that our neighborhoods, as they asked, what can we do for our community? I would say adopt your elementary school or a program within it, they're a great example there. We have the Dollar General Bowl starting to ramp up in the city, the game is actually on the twenty-third, but TV crews and preparations are ongoing at the stadium, and it will be very long before we'll have a parade going through town with the university teams, and it should be an amazing game between Toledo and Appalachian State. The last thing, my wife and family, and I, rather, went to Fort Conde this weekend to see the ice skating rink. And as we may recall, there has been several attempts, I think that the folks with the duck boat tours and the management of the fort have really got a thing going on, they found a synthetic material that they have made the rink out of, it is what the N H L practices on, and so it's about a ninety-seven percent replica of ice, and they're open Wednesday through Sunday, ten to eight, you can get tickets at the Fort Conde website. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. Tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, which will last for eight nights in a row, and it's a very special holiday for Jewish children in our community, and I wish everyone a very happy Hanukkah. Tomorrow, at nine a.m. at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, there'll be a holiday breakfast, invite everybody who is a member up there, there's no charge, and it's a lot of fun. We play games, and it's a lot of good fellowship, and again, that's tomorrow for breakfast by Ron Prater at nine a.m. at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. On Thursday, December fourteenth, there's a program called Santa with a Badge, and you just have to get up really early on Thursday morning at six a.m. and meet the individuals behind that program to shop for children that will be given these gifts. And again, you just show up at Toys R Us, and you get to be a Santa for an hour or so as you get to shop and leave the toys behind for the children. And again, that's this Thursday at six a.m., meet at Toys R Us for Santa with a Badge. There are a lot of opportunities to give to needy children in our community so that they have a very Merry Christmas, we have Toys for Tots, we have the Salvation Army Angel Tree, and I know a lot of churches are also gathering up gifts and also doing for seniors as well. So, as we're in the holiday season, besides the skating, which is fun, and duck tours, and all the other things we can do in our community, and the events that the mayor spoke about for children downtown, I wish everyone a very happy holiday and a very safe and Merry Christmas.
Mrs. Small.
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. This evening, at six-thirty p.m. at the Pillars Middle School, twenty-fifty-one Military Road, we will have our annual Christmas holiday event this evening. We will be having food, drinks, and plenty of games and entertainment. This year, our entertainment will come from the Pillars Middle School, Dear York Elementary School, and also Craighead Elementary School. They will come down and perform different singing, and choir will sing, and poetry, and other poems, inviting all the citizens of District Three to come out this evening at six-thirty p.m. We will also be collecting non-perishable items at this event to the elderly residents. Please consider in bringing a donation such as socks, house shoes, toothbrush, blankets, pajamas, hairbrush, and combs. We will distribute these a couple days before Christmas through the nursing home and different residents in our district, a couple days before Christmas. Already had some residents to stock some gifts off by my office, and if you're not able to make it this evening, and you would like to contribute, please do so by dropping off the gifts here at my office on Broad Street or here at City Hall. Again, this would be at six-thirty p.m., it's not required that you bring a gift, but we're just asking. And again, we will have plenty of food, drinks, and entertainment on this evening at Pillars Middle School. Also, this Saturday, District Three and House State one oh three will host its third annual holiday parades of threes. This would kick off at two o'clock p.m. at the B C Rain High School, and we would travel north on Dorfina Parkway and make a right on Old Military Road to Pillars Middle School, and we would disband. We have several organizations that are participating in this year parade, this year, we are expecting it better than the years before, inviting not just the citizens of District Three, but inviting all citizens nearby outside of Mobile, et cetera, to come out this coming Saturday at two o'clock p.m. on Dorfina Parkway and see the beauty that we have on Dorfina Parkway. And again, this will be a wonderful parade, and we are expecting Santa Claus to be also in being this parade. And again, remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There will be no parading in District One during the Christmas season, but I would like to say that the mother of all parades will take place this Saturday at the Mardi Gras in Trinity Gardens. Get ready. There were three teams on O'Shear Road vying for championships, but they're still trying to figure out who let the dogs out. U M S, the Bulldogs, they stampeded that little team they had up there. So, I just want, U M S and District One, I'm not surprised, I was just waiting on them to let those dogs out, because I knew what they were going to do, it brought the championship home, straight out of District One, just want to get that in. I also would like to take a moment to talk about the most exciting New Year's Eve celebration in the entire Central Time Zone, and it will be held right here in the city of Mobile, Alabama. The moon pie over Mobile. And I would like to, David, I'd like to thank you and your team for helping us get the word out about this magnificent event, the word is out, y'all doing an outstanding job, and I would just like to thank you all for helping us get the word out to every nook and cranny. We're going to have George Clinton with the parliament and the Focadellas on the stage to help us usher in the new year. But in the streets, there will be a first-line parade down Royal Street, and it will be led by the Port City Brass Band, and they're going to march us all the way to the stage. And then, in the parade, the Chattanooga Big Brother is having a new bus built, some monstrous bus, and they're going to load it up with moon pies, and they're going to join us in the parade, and they're going to be throwing out moon pies as we celebrate and as we march down the street. And that's going to be a special event. Meanwhile, there will be a laser light show, really, you have to go to Stone Mountain, Georgia to see a real, that's the closest place that you can go to see a real laser light show, but there will be a laser light show during these festivities right there on Royal Street. And then, we're going to climax with a monstrous fireworks show, and we understand that the fireworks will last more than ten minutes, and we intend to joy, joy the earth with this fireworks show. So, it's going to be a lot of other things going on downtown, we're asking you to come out, we're looking, we're hoping for at least sixty thousand people, but we're going to stay in prayer for good weather. Now, we've had rain, we have had fog, we have had tornadoes, so we just want us, this is the tenth anniversary, and we just want a good, clear... So we, we just want us, this is the tenth anniversary, and we, we just want a good, clear night. If we can get a good, clear night, we're gonna put the show on the road, and we're asking you to be a witness to this fantastic events on New Year's Eve right here in the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, I want to start off by thanking Miss Mary Stevenson, uh, Miss Betty Schutz Harris, and, and the committee of Neighborhood Association leaders who helped to put together my third annual, uh, Christmas leadership, uh, function on last Thursday, held at the Villa Center. In spite of it being the coldest evening, uh, of the year with rain and, uh, you name it, we had it. Uh, the place was packed. Uh, the camaraderie was felt, uh, to be proud of living in the greatest district in the city of Mobile. Uh, you could cut the excitement with a knife, with all of us just happy to be there, celebrating the fact that we all chose to live in such an awesome place. I wanna thank Miss Fairley. I wanna thank Miss Wilson. I wanna thank, uh, Miss, uh, Miss Betty Daniels. I believe we worked, uh, with the city's finance department for all of their efforts and, uh, making sure that everything was taken care of. It was a great time had by all, and a great way to end this year and also talk about some of the plans we have for the upcoming year. Excited about the moon pie drop. We, uh, fixed our annual watch night services so that they can end at ten-thirty so that I could join my colleague, uh, in welcoming, uh, George Clinton and the P-Funk All-Stars. We look forward to being down there on New Year's Eve. Uh, look forward to, to asking each and every one of you to shop local. You know, we have exactly thirteen days until Christmas is so important. While you might be tempted by some of the sales you see online, let's shop local. Let's shop at our small businesses because as you shop local, you invest in the vitality of the city of Mobile. And so, again, happy holidays to each and every one who's celebrating the various ways that you celebrate. A Merry Christmas to all. Look forward to next week as we have our annual meeting at, uh, our old City Hall, continuing that longstanding tradition. Uh, any further announcements from the administration?
No, sir.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we would, uh, move into executive session.
Some move?
And, and to recess.
We gotta move to recess.
Oh, I, I did not hear anything.
That we would not reconvene. We will not reconvene. That has to be added, I believe.
Well, I was gonna, yeah. Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna make a motion that we would move into executive session. And after the executive session, we will not be reconvening.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Um, I, I had one point of order when, when you made a motion to recess. Were you?
It wasn't second, so I don't think so.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that was handled. Yes, so as you know, under the open meetings law, whenever you go into executive session to discuss, uh, legal matters, threat, and pending litigation, whatnot, uh, an attorney has to make a certification. For the record, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama. I have previously rendered a written opinion saying that the executive session is for this purpose. And, um, that's all I have to say.
All right. Been properly motioned and second. We've had any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?